District map and and inserted those census numbers into the existing district map. And we saw that we had a pretty big range, about sixteen percent between the population in the most populous district and the population in the least populous district with those numbers. And we really need to get that overall range under ten percent by law. So again, today, we're going to present some draft maps that get each of these overall ranges to under ten percent. And you can see what had to be done to get those to that point. And then we'll take input and get some revision on those maps and bring back a final map by the end of this month.
Can you hold on for just a second? Kate has control of the screen. It needs to have the recording clicked off. You can't see the slides.
Okay.
Um, can you see them now?
Side maybe, I'm sorry. There we go. Yeah, okay. We've got it. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, so just, just a little bit of discussion on what draft maps are. So again, draft maps were really determined by the county redistricting team from the current district boundaries. They reflected any public input that was either submitted through the the districting scenario modeler or, or through the county team or through supervisors. They meet all legal redistricting requirements. None of these drafts are necessarily expected to become the final map. One could become the final map, or the final map could be created from various nuances from more than one of these maps. So again, our goal is to get some input today on these draft maps and then we'll get to the final map. So on the next slide. Again, file map incorporates both Board of Supervisors and public input. What it will also uphold all of the statutory registering criteria, which we'll review again in a moment. Will definitely be vetted by legal professionals, reflect public sentiment. And ultimately, for each of these redistricting projects that we do, there is some compromise. Because everybody's input cannot be included in the final map. Although a lot of it, but will be included in the final map. Next slide, please. Once again, just a review of the redistricting criteria must be population balanced. Districts must be contiguous. That must be done in compliance with all statutes. Must not be done to favor or disfavor any protected class or political party. And really, the district should be compact as possible. If those items on the left side are met, then we look to the right side. Should preserve communities of mutual interest. And we've been working diligently with county officials to make sure we have those communities of interest identified. And district should preserve the use of natural existing boundaries and roads. And then the next slide, I think, just shows a little bit of kind of the pictures that we're talking about for continuity, compactness, and then utilizing natural boundaries. I'm gonna pass it over to Kate. Once again, Kate's been doing a lot of work on this. And so she's going to go through some decision points that were made with the county staff on this. And then show how those decision points and different options are put into the four draft maps that we're presenting today, maps A through D. So.
Thanks, Ken. So this is a recap of a slide that you have seen before, but this is population change over the last ten years in census blocks. With the kind of dark purple as declines in population and the orange and brown increases in population. So there has been change in, in the county. And so we do know that we have to balance the, the district so that they are under that ten percent deviation. Just as a note that we did look at the citizen voting age population for the county. But there is no minority group that is sufficiently large or geographically compact enough to constitute a majority in any potential district. So we do not have to try to get a majority minority district in your county. So we're really looking at compactness, continuity, and population balancing. So what we did, working with the county, we kind of broke this into a couple of different pieces. And I'll be walking you through kind of the, the thinking and the story of how we can do population balancing in your particular county. So one of the things that we heard was the district boundaries currently are hard to, they're hard to describe. They're hard to say in a couple of sentences, you know, my district goes from here to here. And, and you know, in the north, it's this and in the west, it's this. And so thinking about that with redrawing these boundaries. There's a lot of the county that is, has zero population census blocks. So there's a lot of blocks that could be changed to make the boundaries easier to understand that actually don't affect the population balance at all. So we might as well talk through that. And then just the idea that boundaries can follow, you know, communities of interest, boundaries, roads, geographic boundaries like lakes and rivers. So thinking about how can we make the districts more clear for the people that live in them? And for the, the commissioners to, you know, be able to describe what their district is. So one of the, uh, one of the things that we're looking at, this is the current district boundaries using census block boundaries. So this is the twenty twenty census blocks where they would fall with the current boundaries. And that, you know, I think we've mentioned this before, but it led us to a sixteen point seven percent deviation. And that's the number that we have to get below ten percent. So we're looking at, you know, can we make these boundaries more clear? One particular boundary is already a school district boundary. There's zero population on either side of that line. So it just makes sense to keep that line exactly where it is. But this area, these, the, the boundaries within this area could be cleaner and kind of follow, you know, follow roads or school districts or things like that that are easy to describe. So we worked with the county to kind of redraw these districts and, and have put some specific, you know, describable boundaries on them. So one of the, and, and this is again, just making a baseline map from which to do population balancing, which we will get into next. But this is the, you know, from north to south, this kind of Crowder Flat Road. And I think it goes into Kellogg Road at the north end, being a boundary of District Four. So you would have from the school district to that road is District Four. And then District Two would go from this boundary here, this road here, over to West Side Road. And then West Side Road, so the whole shore of the lake and the other side of the lake and continuing would all still be District One. So this is an idea for a baseline where you would be able to describe the two sides of District Four, District Two, and District One. The other two areas we looked at were kind of cleaning this boundary along at the Big Valley Joint Unified School District. So that's, you know, just kind of follows that school district boundary. And then again, on this one, you know, the Surprise Valley Joint Unified School District, cleaning it along that. So it just follows exactly where the school districts already are in those two areas. So those are kind of the big, you know, cleanups where you'd be able to describe where the edges of the districts are. There were a couple of smaller areas that we cleaned up. So District Three is along Parker Creek Road. Here, this was a submission here for this area. And then we also looked at this area along here so that that whole boundary is just the road. A couple of blocks on the other side of one of the main roads here that are currently in four that could be in two. And it would kind of take all of the blocks on the north side of that road into District Two. And then a couple other blocks, this has, these have zero population. This block was in District Four and kind of stuck down. So we thought about moving that into District Three just to even that boundary line. And then this one, moving this into four, so that this is the road along here. Again, just trying to find a couple of places where we can clean that up. So that is the, and I'll kind of go back, that's the intent of, you know, doing this baseline kind of cleanup for the district boundary, you know, the, the overall, the baseline. So that did not affect the population balancing itself too much. It helped a little, so it got it down to fifteen point nine. So a few people in those areas changed districts, but you know, not enough to balance the population. So, and we'll kind of come back to how all this, you know, flows together at the end. So the other piece that we legally have to do is the population balancing piece. So, you know, Moda County districts have that sixteen point seven percent range. So that's between the highest and the lowest populated districts. This is a difference of only two hundred and eighty-nine people total between District Two and District Five. And you don't have to move, you don't have to make them zero, you know, we're trying to get within the ten percent range. So fewer than that would have to change districts to get it into that range. However, and it would be great if we could move a hundred people from District Two into District Five, and that would balance everything and we would be done. But that border along District Two and Five has zero population. So we can't actually move District Two into District Five to balance that out. So we have to start looking at a couple of other areas. And District One is only nineteen over, so that's pretty, pretty close to ideal. And District Three is fifty-one over, also really close to, you know, where it would need to be. So those could have minimal or no changes or just those baseline, you know, kind of cleanup edits. So we're really looking at two, four, and five, and potentially incorporating a little bit of three. So this is the area, these are all of the, I'm not sure if folks have seen this map, but these are all of the census blocks that have zero population in the county. So, and we'll show kind of the reverse of this in a moment. But this is the boundary of currently the boundary of two and five. And there's no population in this area. So, you know, we can't move people from this kind of green District Two into the orange District Five. So then we're looking at, okay, if we, you know, don't change District One, so it's been filtered out here. And just show the census blocks that have population in the county. It's the reverse of the map I just showed. You know, we see where we can actually move blocks or move, yeah, move blocks into another district to legally get you down below that, you know, ten percent population difference. So District Five is under by a hundred and sixty-three people, which I believe is something like nine, nine percent. So it's too, it's too far below to just leave District Five. So we do need to move some of District Four into District Five. It's the only place that has population, again, that would be contiguous with District Five. And then, you know, if we do that, if we move some of four into five, two is also over. So four into five doesn't solve the whole issue. It's still too high. So then we would have to move some of District Two into District Four. So we've kind of got this low westward of blocks kind of shifting over and potentially District Three in that area as well. So we're going to look at four and five first. And these are the, the two options that we want to talk through. And, you know, both options can go forward for more discussion. Or there might be a clear option to move forward with after this meeting. But these are the two areas that are contiguous with District Five that District Four blocks could move into to balance that population. So option one, this, this is the Canby community here. Kind of this wedge shaped area of blocks in this region. And that's about two hundred and nineteen people in those blocks. It's one community and it's connected to District Five by roads, by one thirty-nine and two ninety-nine. So it is contiguous and it is connected by, you know, actual roads into that district. Option two is this neighborhood here that looks like a more rural neighborhood. And it's south of California Pines, hundred and fifteen people. And it's not actually connected to District Five by any roads. So to get, and this is, you know, kind of my understanding, to get from here to District Five, you would have to drive up to the main roads and then over into District Five. There's a little more of an isolated area versus option one. So those are the two areas we're thinking about. One of those two areas will have to move into District Five because it has that, you know, so much lower population. Some people do have to move into District Five. So we're also going to have to move some of District Two and/or District Three into District Four. So the other area that we are looking at is right around the city. So we have to focus on Alturas and District Four. It just will need more people because we're sending some people out to District Five. So we're going to need to kind of compensate. And then District Two is over by two hundred and sixty-three people, so some need to kind of come out of that, you know, area. There's several possibilities for this area. There's several blocks. There's a lot of people. So there's lot, you know, lots of options for, for balancing this area out. You know, but here's an initial option that Stephanie had worked on, which is to move these areas in pink are currently District Three. They would all move into District Four. So they would be, the District Four boundary would come over here. And then these areas that are currently District Two, kind of along the highway here, would all move into District Three. So it would be south of that road would all be District Three. And so that's, you know, that gets us to a balanced option as well. But there's lots of, obviously lots of moves you can do in the city. So this is really the area where we, you know, would need a lot more feedback on how do we kind of balance this, you know, with these blocks that are in the city. Another possibility is to leave District Three as is. As we said, it's fifty people over. It's not too far over. So we could leave District Three alone and move these blocks that are north of the city into District Four. So this is a hundred and fifty-two people, move to District Four, and it would balance the population. So this is another idea. If we don't want to move blocks that are kind of in this part of the city, you could be looking up further north and moving those into District Four. So that leaves us with four map options, and I'll show these briefly in some slides. But we have this District Four and Five Option One, which is Canby. And then with District Two, Three, and Four Option One, which is the inside the city option. And then we have Option Two, which is south of Calpines. And then Option Two for Districts Two and Four, does that kind of north of the city area? So we've got four maps that we're looking at, and they all get us to a balanced population. So luckily, it's not too, you know, there can be some more changes, but we're there with the, the population balance, definitely. So this is what the map would look like for changes. You would have this area going to five and then a reconfiguration here inside the city. That's five point nine percent. This area, south of Calpines to District Five, instead with this option inside the city would be eight point four percent, still below ten percent. Then go back, you know, you could do Canby and north of the city and that's six point three percent. Or you could do south of Calpines and north of the city, and that's five point eight percent. So they're all viable options. They're all compact. They're all contiguous. And they all balance the population. So this is a, a good starting point for further conversations. All right, Catherine, were you going to jump in at this point?
Yeah, I can jump in for sure. So just a final reminder of kind of where we're at in the timeline. So we have these draft, draft maps, just looking for comments on the draft maps. As Kate said, they all meet the requirements. So now it's really just finessing around the edges and getting to that final map. And we have that final public hearing at the end of the month, on November thirtieth, with an adoption of the plan in December. And then next slide. So this just gives some helpful tips on what is especially helpful as you're sharing input on these draft maps. This is, this is, this might be helpful for this conversation in the meeting, but it's also especially helpful as public comments are coming in. So I'm thinking about what's important, whether it's important to keep the districts as consistent as possible. So fewer citizens seeing their district change, creating more compact or consistently sized districts, preserving those communities of interest. So there's communities of interest within some of these changes that have gotten split that we could avoid that are really important. We would love to know about that. And just sharing that testimony before, either at the meeting or emailing those public comments to the email that's on the screen.
We could certainly pause for any, any questions from supervisors or any public comment. I know that we've given you a lot of information. And so if you'd like us to go back, any of the supervisors, if you have any questions around many of the maps that we just showed, we can certainly go back and let you gaze on them a little bit longer. I think you might have them also electronically that you can look at as well. But certainly pause and, and take next steps from you.
At this point, Kent, at ten forty-six, I will open the hearing to public comments. Beginning with, is there any supervisors that want to make comment at this point? Same none?
Hey, Ned, I raised my hand. Sorry. I would like to say something.
Okay, go ahead, Jerry. I'm sorry, I can only see the slideshow.
Too many things to watch, I understand. So my comment on the differences on, on my district, District Five, between Draft A and Draft Map B is I really like the idea of Draft A over B because I already have one part of my area that I have to go into two counties to get to them. There's no direct way, and so they don't get the service, you know, it's harder for them to come to meetings and all that sort of thing. So I think not, you know, adding that number two instead of number one would have those people disconnected from the district if they'd have to go a long ways around. And so I think that's important in a county that we have as many miles as we have to, the road, super important. Thank you.
Stephanie Willamire, registrar voters, um, might be a little long-winded, but I submitted two draft maps to the group, and I just kind of wanted to go over some of my thinking so you're aware. One of my biggest concerns was trying to follow district boundaries. The reason behind that was twofold. One, we, if unless we follow district boundaries, which unfortunately I couldn't quite follow them all as much as I would have liked. But it, it'll increase our precinct count. And the reason that is important is because recently we were awarded funding from the state. And it's based on precinct count. And because our precinct count was so low, we were one hundred percent funded, where other counties were only seventy-five or fifty percent funded. The other reason is the more precincts we have, and I do expect our precinct numbers to go up with this, I just do. But it requires me to then, when we have an election, more than likely, I'll be ordering more ballots. And the more ballot types you have, the more costs you have. So there could be some increased costs as far as the election department does on this. So I'm trying to rein that in a little bit. And so that's some of the stuff here. The reason we focus more on school districts is because that tends to be the group that goes to election more often. And so if I could kind of rein that in, I can do what's called sub precincts for some of these others. And hopefully that could maybe keep our numbers down a little bit. The other thought process was, you know, I've heard you guys talk about your boundaries and defining exactly where they are. So another thing I talked with Kate about in the group, and that she presented in her maps today, was looking at, instead of, like, before, it was based on, like, townships and ranges. We looked more at streets. And so like she mentioned, you know, the one is like Crowder Flat Road. And then we brought in District Two closer to Goose Lake, so it follows the West Side Road. So you can definitely say, okay, this side of West Side Road is two, this side of West Side Road would be one. And then what I had done was, as you come into town, as you get down to Crowder Flat Road, down the highway, I started playing with that. And so what I did in the presentation that she showed you is anything south of two ninety-nine was District Four, and north of it was District Two. And then as I carried that into city limits, then I ended up bringing District Three also up to the highway. And so then again, you had District Two north of the highway and District Three south of the highway. And I carried that over to Fitch Road. And so then the boundary between three and one would come off the highway. You'd come down Fitch Road to County Road Fifty-Six and then Parker Creek. And so there was definitely a very clean line of what side is whose. Whether this is what you go with is totally your decision. But I just wanted you to know that these were some of the considerations that I had taken into. And you can tweak it how you want.
The Fitch Road and Fifty-Six was actually a suggestion that I put in too, just for, for clarity in that area.
Oh, okay.
The rocks. Supervisor Cabasa.
Maybe a question for Stephanie. So where it all comes together in Alturas? Was, was that a part of what we were thinking? Where I see there's some of three going to four, and two's coming down to three.
Yeah, so.
What I like, I mean, I want to hear what logic is. But it looks like, instead of all this kind of craziness right there in the middle, I like it where there's some clean, identifiable, identifiable lines. That makes a lot of sense to me.
Right. So my thinking on that was District Four originally within city limits was bordering on Warner Street. Well, we needed to take some in. And so I played with it all sorts of variations as I was doing this. And I decided really the best way to do it was instead of trying to come in, because I did. I mean, I went down to like Carlos and did stuff down there. I figured it'd be best just to head east. And so then I kind of brought it in and followed the streets. So I, I believe that's maybe West C, and then it comes down to West Street. I think, I can't remember, but it, it, it basically was just a nice clean shift to the east of the county. And then because of the change I wanted to do, where I was thinking you could keep one district above highway and one below the highway, I had to bring District Three up. And so there was a portion there that used to belong to District Two that I ended up kind of taking and giving it to District Three. But it worked out because I needed to take some from District Two because they were overpopulated. And because I gave some of District Three to District Four, I now needed to give some of District Two to District Three. But yes, I, in my proposal, I followed some very main roads and made it a very clean definition of whose boundaries are what.
Additional comments?
I guess I just, there's going to be give and take, no matter how this works. And I can say from District Four, if moving Canby to District Five occurs, that one doesn't quite feel right to me, but I understand it's a number scheme. Part of it is maybe the relationship that I have with people there. And then the other part is thinking about where we physically live in, in that distance. It's a farther distance, but I understand still there's the law and the mechanics of how we have to balance. But I, I just need to say, that one doesn't feel good to me.
Yeah, when I submitted this map, I think even in my notes, it said, I don't love it, but here's what I presented and here's why. It's, it is, it's going to be give and take. And unfortunately, we have to give some of District Four to District Five. And really, like in their present, presentation, it's, it's Canby or it's Calpines. And I understand what you're saying, but I'm with Jerry on this one. Canby makes more sense to me. It kind of, you'll stay in line with those highways. It kind of just folds into that group a little bit more, whereas Calpines seems a little more displaced. And they're more, I think, in that group, more with the city. Even though they're outside of city, they tend to be more, I think they need to be pulled in that direction, but that is my opinion.
There's no comments?
I had one. I didn't see. I didn't see the maps attached to the, the packet. And I'd made the comment before that to make it intel, you know, we, we need to see it at least attached to the packet. To make it intel, you know, we, we need to see it at least attached to the packet. Thank you.
I believe they were not attached to the packet because of the fact that this is a public hearing presentation for all of us to receive the maps. At this point, and they will be available online. Um, be each of the proposed maps where you can go and look at them. All right, I'm not seeing any, any additional um comments. Folks from, from Flow Analytics, so I'm not sure if you had anything else to present. That was the end of your presentation.
Yeah, I can show one more thing, which is. Um, something else that could be helpful for kind of looking at all of these different options. So let me pull that up and then I will share my. One more time. Um, and these I think will be posted on your website as well. So I think it makes sense to walk through them. Here um in this call and then you'll, you will all have a chance to review all of them. Um, and they can, I'm sure they can be emailed out as well. So this is, can everyone see this PDF um with the tables?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So, yeah, so this is more information. So we have one of these for each of your maps. Um, so you'll see map A here in the corner. Um, and you'll see the overall range here is uh, you know, 5.9%. Um, just like we said in the presentation. So this gives you the demographic breakdown. How many people are over or under that ideal population? Um, then, you know, you, you might look at this and see like, oh, there's, could we? Could we then take a little more from three and put it back into two, you know, or something like that? So at least you can kind of see where those are. Um, we've got the demographic information, total population and the um. Voting age population. In this case, again, we don't need a majority, minority district in the county, but it shows you that information. And then on this page, um. We have something called compactness measures. So these are various ways to measure compactness. Um, and just due to the fact that the, you know, the census blocks in the. In the county themselves are following rivers and they're following, you know, lakes and things like that. They're not going to obviously be perfectly square. Um, but this kind of shows you uh for most of them, if it's, the closer it is to um. Zero, that the least compact it is and the closer it is to one, the more compact it is. Um, the most contact would be a perfect square. So, or a perfect circle, I guess. Um, so you know, this is something that is only useful comparatively. Um, so looking between these options. But they're all relatively the same for compactness. You know, we don't have anything really. Sticking up or running in a weird, you know, kind of shape. Um, so. This is, you know, kind of part of our output. If it's, you know, interesting to look at, but I think we're pretty good for compactness on any of these um options. And then the last page of these is this change areas map. So I think this might be really useful for seeing like, okay, one of the areas that would move from one district to another. So this is where you see these areas of, um, you know, these zero population areas of district four. Um, and district two primarily zero population, um, you know, to balance out those boundary lines up there. And then you can see these kind of cleanups that we did along these boundaries, the school district boundaries. Um, you know, various uh kind of along Parker Creek Road. And then this, since it's, it's map, this is map A, you've got this Canby area going into five. And the scenarios are the colored in, you know, pieces and the existing are the navy blue. And then you've got this area in town kind of changing. It's pretty small, but you know. So you'll be able to see where those changes are, are happening. So we will get you all. Four of these uh PDFs for all these draft maps and then you can really, really look at these. Um, and we have links for the maps in the map tool. So if you wanted to um. Go into the map tool itself. For that particular scenario. So this is draft map A um and zoom in on, you know, the, the city and look at, um. You know, you can make edits from there if you want to. Um, so you've got your, your draft map links and then you can kind of mess with them if you want to, like, I'm going to take map A. And what if I assign, you know, these four blocks to uh district two? Instead, it's only 38 people. Is it still balanced if I do that? You know, maybe that cleans it up a little more. So that's another way to investigate the data as well. All right, that's everything. So we'll be getting that all to you so that you can check it out on the, I think on the website. And I'm going to stop sharing my screen because I think that's all we have to show.
Yep, that's it. We're just uh willing to take more input along the way. We'll be meeting with um the county team to. Review any input that we received uh at this meeting and then any input that we might receive after that to make some adjustments and. Um, make some decisions and window down uh these four options down to one option for the 30th for presentation.
Kent, Stephanie Willmeyer has, has some more comments at this point?
This actually is more on the board. So right now the board's boundaries are um. Defined and approved by ordinance. And I know that we had talked about maybe rescinding the ordinance and changing it to where it's approved by resolution. And since we're getting close. Close to the end, I think that's something I know, like Margaret had said, that's something we could do. That needs to be a discussion of, are we going to do that? That or not, because we would need to get that ball kind of rolling one way or the other. Um, I cannot start the signature and lead process for the election until 28 days after the maps are approved. So. However, this is done, whether we want to come up with a. A map that we like and we have a first reading or second reading, because that's what will have to happen if we do an ordinance. Or if we can look into the process of rescinding the current ordinance and now approving it by resolution. There really needs to be a discussion that we have with county council and how that would happen if that's what you choose to do. Um, because when you approve, it starts my timeline. And so I, I do need to know that information.
Sophie, are you? Prepared to address that at this point or with? With a future meeting?
I know we have some timelines that we're concerned about with regards to redistricting because it has to be done, you know. By the end of the year, but um not necessarily prepared to go into a full discussion on whether or not you guys should set your boundaries by resolution or ordinance. It's an option. If you want to give us direction, we can certainly work on, on doing that and have it before you. Um, in short order, it's just whether or not you guys want to do it that way or not.
What is your?
Uh, I, I know Sophie, you said you're not prepared, but. I'm going to ask if you have any at least brief pros and cons for ordinance. Versus resolution.
Well, ordinances are, are rules and basically laws that you guys create for the county and resolutions are. Kind of more like suggestions and guidelines. Um, and we still follow them, but they don't have the weight that ordinance has behind it. Um, the ordinance takes a public hearing, takes two readings and usually doesn't. Go into effect until 30 days after the final vote and resolutions take effect immediately. So there's. Just some timelines with regards to that.
We have equal, we have authority to choose either one.
Right now, everything is set by ordinance. So I believe we would have to change.
Yes, but that option is available.
To us, yep.
Is there a? A difference going forward as far as which one holds up to a potential challenge? Better than the other?
I think ordinances will always hold up to a challenge better because you've had two public hearings, public readings, gotten significant input from the public on it, have discussed it. Multiple times and it takes 30 days to go into effect. Of course, the court has to publish it um in the newspaper and publish it after it's been approved. So there's. Significant exposure as opposed to a resolution, which you could just bring forward, have published size on your agenda and then move forward on it. But. It's really your option.
Supervisor Rhodes or Burns, do you have any input?
Like, this redistricting is approximately 10 years. So I would think more in lines of being an ordinance. And that is basically local law instead of resolutions, local policy or board policy.
Supervisor, Byrne?
Yeah, I would just say, let's look at our timelines and see which we actually have them, you know, do we have time to do both those avenues or not? And that's going to probably dictate the answer here.
I can work with councils on the timelines and, and report back to the chair.
Okay, and, and it does look like we will have, potentially have a special meeting. Um, later in the month. Um, so we may have an opportunity to, to have a presentation from county council at that point. Supervisor Cabasa.
And I prefer an ordinance because it allows the public the greatest opportunity to provide their. Comments. And I think that this is a, is a very important decision that could be of interest to them.
All right, at this point, um, see no additional comments. I will close the. Public hearing on redistricting at 11:07. And. Thank you folks from Flow Athletics and I. Understand that at least some of you will be joining us at six o'clock or 6 PM.
Yeah, yeah, three of us will.
All right, good. Love forward to that. Thank you.